All right, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall, I'm the Lower Paxton Township Manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. It is a very short agenda of the Board for this evening. It is a workshop session, and there is exactly one item on the agenda under Old Business, which is to include action to adopt ordinance 2024-03, which pertains to a request from SNA Homes for a rezoning within their zoning map for an amendment to a plan commonly referred to as Montreal. After that, the Board will hear any last announcements, and then finally make a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Thompson.
Much Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Public comment is for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you have something that you want to talk about to the Board, now is the time to do that. If you do come up, I ask that you give your name and your address, please. Is there anybody for public comment? Sir?
Hello. I'm not a great public speaker, so...
That's okay. We just need your name and address.
Sure. Howard Hirsch, 5710 Union Deposit Road is my property within the township. I actually live on 1944 Christopher Place in Susquehanna Township. This is about the R1, R2...
Okay, if I can just stop you?
Sure.
So that would be under Old Business, action to adopt ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So at that time, then we'll allow you to come up and speak.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anybody else under public comment? Okay. Chairman and Board Member comments. Board, do I have any comment? Do you have any comments this evening? Just have one, all I can, just to remind everybody and those that are listening, we have National Night Out on August the 6th. It will be from 5 to 8, and that will be held at George Park. So please bring your family and your friends out. We have a lot of civic groups that will be participating. The Lower Paxton Variety Band will be playing, and there'll also be some food trucks there. So mark your calendars for August the 6th. Next on the agenda, we have Old Business, and this is action to adopt ordinance 2024-03, approving a request from SNA Homes for zoning map amendment for tax partial, 35-067-098, R1 to the OSD. I will be turning this over to Attorney Mike Miller.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, there was a public hearing on this matter on June 18th. That public hearing was kept open for today. There was a public notice provided that there would be a hearing for ordinance 24-03 at this time and place. I'm going to make that note as part of the record, and Summer, I'll ask you to put it as part of the record as well. The property has been posted on June 26, 2024. Mailings has been sent to Neighbor on June 28, 2024. And the issue that's joined in ordinance 2403 is an amendment to Chapter 2 of 3 of the zoning ordinance, Section 303.8, to modify the Lower Paxton Township zoning map to rezone the parcel of land from R1, low-density residential district to open space development overlay district, 24-03. And the parcel is parcel identification number 35-067-098. The parcel consists of 44.3 acres of land. It adjoins an institutional district to the west, the R3 high-density district to the northwest, the R1 district to the immediate south, and the R1 district to the northeast and the east of the parcel. On the agenda for this evening, after the public hearing, after people have been heard, the Board may take action if it wishes to take action at that time. The first person I call on is Amanda Zerby, who is the zoning administrator. Ms. Zerby, is there anything that you want to add to this that I haven't covered?
No, sir.
Succinct as usual, thank you. And then, at this time, I will open to public comment. A couple points I want to make. The issue before the Board, just so we're clear, is whether or not to rezone this parcel of land. There were a lot of questions at the last public hearing about traffic and about impact, and all those are reasonable questions, a lot of which will be dealt with in the land development phase if it is in fact rezoned. And so we'll take all the testimony about anything that is relevant, but just with that caution or that understanding. And so, starting, why don't we just start completely randomly from the left and move over? Yes, sir?
Why don't you make a preliminary statement, identifying yourself again for the record,
and then we'll take public comment. Sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Ambrose Hines, on behalf of the applicant, SNA, I just wanted to clarify some things that were raised at the last hearing. The first of which is, while this is proposed as a zoning map change, our view, and certainly the township can confirm this, that the proposal really here is to apply the overlay district, or the open space overlay district overlay to this property. The underlying zoning, including the underlying uses that are allowed in the R1, are not being proposed to be changed as a result of this. So there was some question at the last meeting about what kind of uses would be permitted. The nature of the uses allowed is going to remain the same as the underlying R1 district. And also, the open space overlay development provisions specify that only single-family dwellings would be allowed, so it would be single-family lots. That was one of the main questions that was raised at the last hearing. So, and as the Solicitor explained, a lot of the other questions that were addressed or brought up by the various neighbors, all legitimate, primarily related to the details of development, and certainly, this is the very start of this process, and we're going to be working through what we expect to be a lengthy land development process, and we're more than willing to work with the neighbors and address their concerns as they come up during that process. So I just wanted to address those two points at the outset, and turn it back over to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Starting from the left of the room, that's my left, and starting from the front row next to Mr. Hirsch, the lady next to Mr. Hirsch, anybody in that row who has comments, please come to the mic, one by one. I think we're going left to right, but yeah, Mr. Hirsch, go ahead. You have to be at the mic. You have to identify yourself, as you did, so we can get that for the record.
I just have a comment. I'm Howard Hirsch. Just a comment about where this area is going. If you look at the West Shore, we have people moving in from the south, excuse me, and people moving in from the north. We have people moving in from the west, the area is getting a lot larger. You can see the development that's going on in the West Shore, and that development is starting, excuse me, starting on the East Shore, it's nerves. And my point that I'm trying to make is, the area is going to get larger, and I think the R2, even open space, is a positive thing. It's not supposed to be for personal gain, but I truly believe that the amount of residents that are going to move into the area are going to increase the tax base, which is going to increase commercial business, which is going to increase the income for the township, which will take care of the road situations and take care of the, you know, all the downfalls that people are bringing up. Progress can't be stopped. And I think personally, if you're against it, that's self-serving, because every township is growing. And so my opinion is that I'm full favor of an R2 change, even though it will benefit me, I admit that, but I think it's the right thing for the township. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. The gentleman next to Mr. Hirsch in the black shirt, do you have a comment? If so, please go to the mic.
My name is Ron Lawson. I own the property at 4359 Linglestown Road. I received a notice that the hearing tonight was about rezoning of that property, but that is not on the agenda. Has the agenda been changed, or has this notice an error?
Okay, was that maybe a planning commission?
Planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
My name is Terrence James. I live at 5520 Union Deposit Road. My question is, if this is changed to the open space development, and nothing has progressed in so long, will it change back to R1?
Well, sir, it's public comment, but let me stretch a point to answer your question. What the applicant is asking for is a zoning map change to allow the overlay district to be placed over this lot. I suppose it is possible that if nothing happens with it in 10 years or something like that, somebody could ask for additional zoning relief or something like that, but we have to proceed under the assumption that if somebody is asking for the relief, they're going to use the relief to construct something, and that's why they've given us a sketch plan.
There's a sketch plan, the one that they are going to provide or use?
Yes, that's part of the packet, sir, yep.
And there's no, okay, so it's just pre-developed?
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
I guess my only, well, I have a couple things...
Ma'am, if you would just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Carol Pally. I live at 5520 Union Deposit Road. And in your overspace development, in your very... And in your overspace development, in your very first paragraph, it says, providing, I'm sorry, conserve forested areas that are important part of the ecological cycle, providing for groundwater recharge, air pollution reduction, wild leaf habitat, reduction of construction costs, and municipal maintenance costs. And in the overlay that was shown on the board, it does away with all of that. It takes everything away that the OSD prescribes that it is not to do. And the overlay that was shown up there before, at the prior meeting, many, a few years ago, I don't remember how many, there was a different overlay showing what they wanted to put in. There was only two loops, a loop that went up to the right, a loop that went over to the left. And I thought there was only 47 houses. I heard somebody say 57 houses, so I'm not sure if they want to increase it by 20 houses or 30 houses. But the plan before this, that they came to the township with, they wanted to take it to 101 houses. They wanted to put townhouses in, condos, if you want to call them, I don't know. But the plan keeps changing, and whenever they come, they get it, something approved, nothing is done for years. They don't go back and then do what they asked for, because at the last meeting, where they asked to go to 101, and they were told, no, they couldn't do that. They could build what they were approved for on the R1, which is, you know, the 47 or the 57. Nobody's trying to stop them from building, period. We only want to keep it to something that makes, for everybody else that lives there, still livable. So that if it is 47 houses, fine. If it was the 57, fine. But then every time they come back, they come back and wanting more and more and more, and squeezing more traffic. I know you said, "Don't mention traffic."
I did say that. I just tried to get some ground rules, but ma'am, it's your public comment.
But, and it's going to still, I know, it'll put more pressure on the township for maintenance of roads, and if the roads are the same size as they put out at Union Square, just look at the curbs. They're all marked up because the roads are not wide enough. I know my husband doesn't want me to mention this. But before S&amp;A came in and they put the road back between the property where you went on Union Deposit Road, they come in with big guns, told us, "Oh, you're on our property." They took our driveway. Well, if you look at the sketches now, it shows they are on our property. So I honestly do not personally trust S&amp;H Homes. I don't trust what they say. I don't trust what they do. And, you know, I have a personal stake in this, because we own the property that is by that road. We have to go in around the side and curve in now, and, you know, you can't do that to people. You can't go in for one thing, then say, "Oh, well, we can make more money if we change it to this," and then they don't do it. I thought I wasn't allowed to say some of the things that I had on my notes by what you said.
Ma'am, it's your public comment. Say whatever is appropriate, and we'll take your comments.
I guess I said it all. That's my opinion. And I would hope that you do consider what was approved for them in the past, their R1, the number of houses that they were approved for before, and let them build them. Nobody says, "No, you can't build back there. We don't want you to, that that land has to stay barren." But don't keep upping the number on us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hines, in your row, is there anybody that wants to make a public comment? Nope. Okay. The gentleman in the back in the orange shirt, would you like to make a public comment? Okay. Ma'am? Sir? One, two, three. Okay, going quickly. Sir with the glasses, in the back row, if you'd like to make a public comment, now's the time.
Steve Avery, 5628 Union Deposit Road, south side of the lot we're talking about. I don't know, I don't remember from the last time, or the time before that, or the time before that, how many houses or units they want to put on this property, but this is third, maybe the fourth time, they come here to change the zoning, and like the lady before me said, they still haven't built. So why? Are they just, and with this overlay, does that allow them to build whatever they want to build there, once they get it? I, you know, it's something that I'm not sure, because I haven't seen what the township, I haven't been able to find what the township allows to happen in this type of overlay, if they could go to low-cost housing, or what? And if they develop it, that's fine, but they're going to, they're taking a big swath of woods out, and they're going to leave open the space that never had woods on it before, which is confusing. The open space is just the flat area between the apartments and the school, and the woods that are there are going to get cut down. It's confusing to me, and one entrance and exit is also confusing, too, how they are allowed to do that. And I guess that's really all. I'm just confused on why this is, keeps happening, and nothing gets done.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. The woman next to Mr. Avery, the woman in the very nice hat. Okay. You're very welcome. The gentleman, two individuals who just came in. Mr. Epstein.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you have a comment.
I have comments.
Okay.
I can't believe it.
You guys are shocking. I have a visual. I mean, I want to give a history of where we were, where we're at. Everybody's in this room here. You know what? Take this one instead. It's something that I want you to... I can leave it up if anybody can see it, but, well, then you'll have to check it out. I mean, that's, that's the best I can do. Eric Epstein, 4100 Hillsdale Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of Central Doffin School District. So I know there's been confusion. I've been involved with the issue since the outset. And this began in 2004, when we sold the parcel to S&amp;A for $1.1 million. It was 68.96 acres, and I think now what they're talking about, maybe 44.3. But what I want to point out is the genesis of how we got here. So going back to 2013, the developer, which was S&amp;A, made a presentation of their revised plan for this property housing development, and a bunch of neighbors were there, a lot factor there. It was a 44-acre tract. The property is owned R1 low-density residential, and the developer requested a zoning change to R2 medium-density residential, which would allow more homes to be built on the tract. The initial proposal would have allowed 77 townhomes and 44 single homes, was rejected by the township. The revised proposal S&amp;A provided was for a bit more houses, but not as much, 102 houses. So we went from 101 to 102. The initial zoning allowed for 49, to make a long story short. S&amp;A came back and asked for 121, which we rejected. They brought it down to 101. So now we're at 71, and I think the decision is, have we struck the proper balance? I mean, as a school board member, I'm going to ask for some stipulations tonight, but there is 48% open space. It's unusual. Any project I've been involved with, there's a minimum of 40% open space, which includes Blue Ridge and Stray Wind. So we're always, I think, cognizant of open space, park, and recreational space, and if you look at the letter from the Planning Commission, apparently their proposal dots all the i's and crosses all the t's in terms of what, I think Mr. Hirsch was talking about, what the vision for our community is supposed to be. In terms of asks, I guess, I don't know what else to say. I mean, we have to be agnostic on this, but we only heard about this earlier today. So hopefully, in the future, you'll contact us sooner, or I won't be as generous as I am tonight. It's hard to get home with flat tires. So where are we? In terms of the school district, when we did this issue before, there were a number of issues that we hammered out, and I'd like to stipulate moving forward. This land is contiguous to Central Doffin School District, and it's proximate to Central Doffin East. So we would like to have a barrier, whether it's, we would prefer a fence, also with landscaping. We do need a commitment in terms of a buffer. I mean, I don't know what the plan is, because this is preliminary, so we would need a fence, we would need a buffer. We would not oppose emergency access to the site. As everybody knows, there's only one way in and one way out, and so that's a bit of a challenge. Our concern has to do with a letter that was written, hopefully I can find it, from the Planning Commission. And in the letter, it beseeches you to look, it's the third paragraph, third to last paragraph on page two. I want to read it to you, because it really caught my eye, and I'm not sure what it means, and I think the whole crux of the issue tonight spins off this question. That was prepared by Robert Sandler, so he's from Doffin County Planning Commission. He said, "Finally, the township should be reminded that if rezoned, as proposed, the property could be developed with any of the permanent uses and provisions allowed in the district. Even though the applicant has suggested their preferred development on the site, once rezoned, all permitted uses are possible, and the applicant is not obligated to develop the property as suggested through their sketch plan. Therefore, the township should be comfortable with any and all possibilities permitted in the rezoning of this property if it decides to approve the proposed amendment, as well as the possibility of being rezoned." So to me, what it says is, you have, I read the entire application, tri-county Planning Regional Commission, I read Andrew Baumberger's narrative, I saw what they proposed, but this, to me, is the rub, is how do we secure, and I asked S&amp;A if we could get some kind of guarantee, as Attorney Miller pointed out, we're probably not at that phase, but I would feel a lot comfortable if the plan that was proposed is the plan that's going to be built. So we did share these concerns with S&amp;A. I don't know what the response is going to be. Hopefully, we'll get something tonight. But I think if you look at the odyssey of this plan, it went from 49 to 121 to 102. We're down to 71. My assumption would be, I don't know, the developer could reduce that many more units and be profitable. I mean, I think that's where we're probably at. The other concerns that people raise, we can bake it into the development, you know, it would be great to have wide boulevard-like streets. That's always what we would support. It would be great to have sidewalks going both ways. You know, so there's accommodations that, you know, when you meet with the developer, I think would be helpful, and, you know, obviously, you'd like everybody to welcome them as good neighbors. You know, for us, it's increased tax revenue, but we're mindful of the fact that nobody wants anything really built close to them. I get it. So that is a map, and I'll bring it up to you. 121 units. That was a proposal. On the top is a proposal now for 71, a differential of 50. And again, if you look at the comments from the Planning Commission, they seem to presume or argue that the open space, which is 48%, is generous, and preserves, quote, if you look at it, "Sensitive assets." So I think, all in all, you know, it's your decision to make. Just wanted to offer those comments, and we'll continue to work with the developer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Gentlemen, in front of Mr. Epstein, would you like to make a comment? Okay. I would like to, before we ask the board if they have any comments, Ms. Zerby, would you take the microphone for a sec? Oh, you can do it from a seated position, that's fine. I just want to make something clear on the record, if I understand this correctly, and don't want to put you on the spot. Under the OSD overlay district, do I understand correctly, there has to be at least 40% minimum open space?
Yes.
And do I also understand correctly, under your ordinance, that the permitted use in an OSD development is single-family detached dwellings?
Yes.
All right. And it doesn't say anything about townhouses or things like that?
No.
I think that's all the questions I have for you, Ms. Zerby. Members of the board, do you have any additional questions you want to put on the record?
Amanda, I just had one. So with the amount of properties that's there, with the open space, that they're allowed to build 71 at the most, 77 single-family dwellings?
Their yield plan shows 77, the ability to do 77, but they have shown 71.
Right. Okay.
Right.
All right.
And Amanda, the, under R1, that would be about 70 units?
70 or 71, I think.
Okay.
70.
So just when we talk about the difference in the traffic and everything like that, we're pretty close. I mean, it's not nothing, but it's, it's kind of close. The uses for an overlay, it's still an R1 overlay, and it's only single-family homes. So just for perspective, is all, and that's all. I'm trying to get my head around this, too. And the reminder that this is just early in the process, and all the details still have to come before multiple oversights, and, you know, details could be worked out there. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we're talking about, as far as the potential number.
Any other members of the Board of Commissioners have comments or questions they want to put on the record, before I ask Mr. Hines if he has any last comments?
Yeah, I just want to ask one more. So the 20,000 in the R1, they would be further apart, because they wouldn't have the open space. The 10,000, they would be closer together with the open space then? Okay.
Last time for the board. Okay. Mr. Hines, do you have anything else you want to spread on the record? You heard Mr. Epstein make some offers to work with you, including access, which I'm sure you took note of. Okay. Well, without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, return the gavel to the President. I do think it's important to announce, I think the President did, but in case she didn't, we did have a short executive session prior to this meeting under Section 708 of the Sunshine Act, to provide for a privileged advice, which is specifically allowed under subsection 5. So I just want to spread that on the record. Madam Chair.
You beat me to it. I was going to do it when we were done with this.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I stole your thunder.
It's okay.
That ends the public hearing. Madam Chair, the floor is yours for the last item on the agenda.
Okay. Any more board comments? We're good? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-03, approving a request from S&amp;A Homes for a zoning map amendment for tax partial 35-067-098, an R1 to an OSD?
So moved?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the fact that this is a lot of details that need to be resolved and worked out and discussed in the future. We've got to start someplace.
Ms. Smith, could we please have a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Next, we have announcements. Board members, do you have any announcements? Mr. Gutt shall? Mr. Miller? Okay. The next meeting will be next Tuesday. That will be a business meeting, and the date, I'm losing it, is 16th?
July 16.
July 16. I'm sorry.
July 16th, I'm sorry. July 16th at 7:00 in this room. Meeting adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Okay.